Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the study session for the Mission Springs Water District. And I will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Director Sewell. Director Grasha.
Here.
Director Duncan.
Here.
Vice President Martin.
Here.
President Wright.
Here.
Thank you, we have corn.
Thank you, I'm second, I need to find a pen. No, he's on vacation. Vacation. Oh, call in, oh, I don't know.
No.
Okay, our rules of procedure, please.
Yes, Madam President. With respect to the rules of procedure, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as procedural guidance. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comment at meetings of the board. The president of the board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The president is responsible for maintenance and decorum at all board meetings. No person shall be allowed to speak who is not recognized by the president. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the president as the presiding officer. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given the opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting. In order to ensure the orderly progress of board meetings, the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Dory, do we have anybody for public input?
We do not.
Thank you, item number six, COVID-19 update.
You, can you hear me now?
Is your mic on?
I think my mic is on. Okay, let me start by saying that we do not have anyone out because of COVID. And that has been the case for some time now. Presently, the pandemic is essentially putting us into a holding pattern of two groups. Those that are vaccinated and those that are not. Globally, the pandemic is affecting those two groups differently. Ninety-five percent of the COVID cases that are hospitalized are those unvaccinated. I think it's somewhere north of ninety-five percent, incidentally. This is a confusing time, though, because of the conflicting messages we get and the timelines. And however, we must continue to be cautious. The incentive for us is to do so because we need to do everything possible to protect our staff and from this virus. And also, the possibility for funding depends on our compliance with the ever-changing restrictions. And failure to follow these restrictions could jeopardize our, any funding that we might receive to help us with the costs that we're experiencing because of the pandemic. We do not know that we need to follow, we do know that we do, that we need to follow, excuse me, the OSHA guidelines, however confusing they are. But if we expect to see financial relief, we know that the OSHA guidelines will probably be the one set of rules that we need to stick by. We also must move people around to make enough room for everybody to work safely. And we want to open the public, we want to open up to the public in a way that is safe. And that's what we're looking at with regard to the counter. And we'll, we'll get back to you on when we, when we have something that we can share with you. But I also want to say, and I can, I might bring this up later, is that in addition to all of this, as you all probably know, that I am reorganizing and moving people around internally to prepare for this increased workload that we expect very soon. And as you come into the office, you will see people maybe located in different offices. But we will make this work, and I'm pretty excited about it, and things are going pretty well. So that's really all I have with regard to COVID.
Okay, great, any questions?
No.
Have any questions, Director Grasha?
Just a comment, Los Angeles just reinstated all masks for all people in all places, regardless of vaccination status. And they're actually trending ahead, just a little bit ahead of Riverside County. And one hundred percent of all vaccinated cases on an aircraft carrier out at sea have been fully vaccinated. And one hundred percent of the people that came down over the weekend with COVID were vaccinated. And the number's in the several hundreds now. So we don't know yet enough to declare a victory in, on any side of the political spectrum on that issue. So that's it.
Okay, item number seven, human resources report. Let's see, we've got a couple of anniversaries or one anniversary.
Yeah, just a two-year, but we're happy. Michael's a good employee.
And a promotion.
Promotions. Julio Martinez has been promoted to water production operator, formerly in the field, field operations tech. And Jason Weekly got his distribution grade three, so.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Jason.
But no significant five, 10, or 15-year.
Right, there's not, not for the month of July, I guess. Okay, item number eight, the ordinance 2021.
Yeah, I think we'll have Steve talk to this in just a bit. But the first thing I wanted to say is this is primarily a ministerial process. In, at the last meeting, you did adopt the, basically, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan by adopting the Urban Water Management Plan. This is a process where we now need to take that plan and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan and modify our ordinance so that it reflects that, that plan. And so, basically, the only other thing I really want to mention before I let Steve expand on this is the fact that, one of the things, as you all know, one, we are waiting anxiously to get a determination and a final funding agreement for our regional plant. We should hopefully get nearly sixteen million in grants and a point nine percent loan from the state revolving fund, which is funding to die for. The first thing, one of the first things they do and have done in the past is they're going to look to see if we have an urban water management plan and a water shortage contingency plan. So if we don't, I just, I have to tell you that I don't know if it will jeopardize the funding or not, or I don't know what they would do, but I do know they check for it, okay? So with that said, Steve, did you want to elaborate on that then?
Yeah, sure, thank, appreciate that, General Manager Arden. So as Arden noted, we adopted the water, urban water management plan and the water shortage contingency plan last month. But in order to be able to enact the water shortage contingency plan and make it part of the district's policy, we needed to take the extra step to get it approved as an ordinance or adopted through an ordinance procedure. The district's current ordinance 93-3 includes all water regulations and service requirements on how the district operates. And section fifteen of that 93-3 ordinance was the old water shortage contingency plan. In addition, there were two other ordinances passed in 2014 and 2015 when we were under a statewide drought orders that also included additional drought-related water actions, excuse me, water shortage actions the district could take during that drought period. So what we're doing is we're repilling all three of those components and replacing it with the entire, the plan in its entirety. So that's what's in front of you today for consideration. And again, this is the final step to make it a part of the district's policy and be able to implement and impose fines or what have you under the plan as required.
Steve, can you tell us, I was, when I was reading the, the part in the agenda, it seems to me that Mission Springs has a lot of leeway to do what we would like to do and what we want to do. And we don't have to do what other districts are doing. We have the authority to, I know that the state would tell us what, what, you know, emergency number we're in. Then we would kick in and be able to put it into ourselves what we want or what, what we would do in that category.
That, that's correct, President Wright. And I think that's a very good point to bring up. So all we did from the old water shortage contingency plan was give ourselves more options at what level we can react to as ordered by the state and the water actions or to the implementation actions we can take to reduce water usage. So if the state calls on, you know, the Southern California Water Districts or a statewide drought for a certain percentage, say a twenty percent reduction, we have a toolbox and we can implement anything in that toolbox to try to reduce water demands by twenty percent. And you are correct, it is up to each individual agency to implement actions that best suit their specific district.
By expanding the levels that, that we need to respond to in the shortage, we also giving ourselves some flexibility to not have to overreaching requirements. When we go from one stage to the next, gives us a little more of a ramp up and possibly we could prevent having to go to the stages four, five, and six in most of these cases.
Yeah, okay, any questions? Question, Director Grasha?
My understanding was that this process that we just went through and all the districts agreed to kind of speak with one voice on the, on the, on the drought. What I just heard the president say sounds like she's hoping to drift from that obligation that we made. And I'm hoping that I misunderstood that. And maybe somebody can explain exactly what it is that I just heard.
Director Grasha, I'm happy to try to answer that question. To clarify, we are all adopting a very, very similar water shortage contingency plan that has almost identical actions at each water shortage stage that we can implement. But it's ultimately up to each agency to pick and choose from that toolbox which ones they implement. So under a twenty percent water shortage scenario, we would all be looking at the same toolbox of what we can implement, but each agency can pick and choose what they think will be the biggest benefit towards getting the water shortage to meet the state's requirements.
In, in, you know, in each water agency, even though we're trying to be consistent with that application so that we're fair to everybody in the valley, each agency does have a different level of efficiency. We and Coachella have probably, you know, a lot lower per capita consumption than they do basically south of the, of I-10. So there's some latitude there for us to make changes that are more effective and, and consistent with what our usage is and our per capita.
That's what I read.
And I'll add one other scenario or example to consider is if, you know, we simply don't have the green outdoor areas that you see in a lot of other areas of the valley within Mission Springs Service Area. So asking residents to reduce their outdoor usage by a certain percent likely won't have the same benefit in reducing overall water consumption as it may have in another city, you know, throughout the valley. So we may need to implement additional actions or in lieu of doing that, enact a different action to help get that water shortage usage down.
So we would have the authority to ask our ratepayers to reduce indoor usage if we needed to slow. And if, if we were, if we were told we had to cut twenty percent, it'd be almost impossible to do, certainly without reducing indoor usage. And so, what happens in that situation? It sounds like, it, it, it almost sounds, I don't want to use too big words here, but it's, it's almost barbaric in some cases, you know? People, people already. So I, I get why we need that flexibility and I appreciate your answer, so thank you for that.
And I think the state would tell us which stage we're in. And then we look at that, that our toolbox and see which part of that toolbox for that stage would best fit our customers and our conservation, correct, Steve?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, Director Duncan.
What if there is a conflict between us and our wholesaler? If they're on level four, we're on level three, or if we decide level three items, you know, the odd numbers and they're on level three, even-numbered restrictions? What happens if, if that scenario popped up? And I can't.
I don't think, the levels are told us by, they're dictated to us by the state.
So then we have no control.
We have no control over the level, but we have control over our toolbox.
Well, what if our toolbox and DWA's toolbox is different?
It's not, it's the same, that's what this is about, that we have all different things we can pick out of that toolbox.
That's what I'm saying, what if we pick these items and they pick those?
That's fine, that's fine, don't worry.
Well, who's, who's in control, the wholesaler or the retailer?
I don't know which.
We would be, each utility or, you know, district would be in charge of.
Yeah, that's what I read.
The area in their, in their jurisdiction.
Okay, I understand that. And you're, you're tapped down and all around the answer, I'm looking for A or a B. In the event there is a conflict between our choices and what DWA chooses.
There can't be a conflict.
You said we can each pick within our toolbox.
For our, for our district.
Okay.
For our. The district, the toolboxes are all the same, that's what's the same.
Right.
Right, and if, and, and the levels are told to us by the state.
Okay, let's, let's.
And they don't have to, they don't have to do what we do and we don't have to do what they do. As far as our toolbox goes, it doesn't matter, we can use, they can use one item in the toolbox and we can use a different item in the toolbox, we just have to get to the same point.
Right, okay.
Okay.
But you, you, you just answered my question with clarifying. What if we have one item and our wholesaler has two items out of their toolbox picked?
Doesn't matter, that means they need two to get to where they need to be and we only needed one to get to where we needed to be.
So you're saying the retailer has more horsepower than the wholesaler?
No, I don't get what you're, what's, what's your.
Okay, let's say we're all on, on level three. And there are five items to choose.
Correct.
A, B, C, D, E. We decide, or we're told we're on level three. Mission Springs decides, so we want to implement.
The board does.
Right.
The board.
We want to implement subcategory, whatever, level A and B.
Right.
Okay.
Not level, tool.
Tool, okay, tool A and B.
All right.
DWA, who is our wholesaler.
It doesn't matter, they're a wholesaler or not in this case.
Well, that's, that's the answer I want.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't, I wonder why you kept saying wholesaler, I guess. They're just a water district, like we're a water district in this case.
Right, but they are our wholesaler. If they're using C and D toolbox.
Right, that means, yeah.
Is that only for their?
Correct. That, they do theirs, because their area is different than ours, they have a lot more grass, they might use the grass thing, we don't need the grass.
But I see what Randy's saying, they can't say that that applies to our.
Right.
Because they wholesale to our area.
Can they override?
We have our own.
Right, not according to our ordinance, the one we're going to pass.
Steve, correct me, but we each have our own water shortage contingency plan and the board dictates, correct?
Arden, you are correct, and Director Duncan, this is specific to urban water demand, so wholesale is off the table. Those change, any changes to wholesaling or water deliveries are completely separate topics. So there is no overlap in any DWA authority with, with water shortage contingency planning. It would be Mission Springs' sole decision.
Yes, well, why didn't you jump in twenty minutes?
Try the first of July.
My blood pressure up. Yeah, okay, I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, I was, after I read it, I went, wow, we do, we've got, we can do whatever we want to over here, but we all got the same toolbox, that's where the consistent, consistency comes in, I suppose. That everybody has that same toolbox, but not everybody's going to need everything in the toolbox, okay? So we get to pick what we need, okay.
Madam President, before we move on, Russell Betts has joined the meeting. Mr. Betts, are you here to observe or do you care to make public comment today? Mr. Betts?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
You know, I have been having a run, getting people a little bit irritated with me, so I'm just going to keep quiet today. I think we'll just sit this one out, so I'm just listening in.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I hope you appreciate the humor there, sorry.
Okay, okay, so any other questions on item number, everybody got it now? Okay, cool, it's actually, it's very, it's really good. I think I was a little kind of concerned when you were saying at the workshop that, that, but then when I read it, I went, geez, we got all the lateral we need. Nobody can tell us what to do, we, and, and the toolboxes is what the whole valley put together to be consistent.
Right, right, I understand, we all have the same.
Okay.
Goal, same, same tools to get there.
Okay, great, okay, so item number nine, groundwater sustainability plan update. Is this on Thursday or is this today?
No, no, we'll, we'll do this today, I, this was, yeah, well, in 2014, as you know, the state legislature passed the sweeping groundwater legislation, something we've never seen ever, probably, at least in the last century. It's called the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and it will change all of our lives. It's the first time we've actually had legislation that basically sets a standard for our groundwater aquifers. that means that, and the first thing it did was required that we all establish groundwater sustainability agencies. Those groundwater sustainability agencies then will prepare either together or individually a groundwater sustainable plan. We, Mission Springs has been very proactive in managing the water. We have a, we have, we've had over a decade of sustainable yield and that's resulted in us being, with a hand, you know, being the first of a handful four or five that, that were selected that, that actually received approval for, excuse me, for their plan called, in our case, an alternative plan. But there are three separate plans in Coachella, in the Coachella Valley Groundwater Basin, basically. And Brian is, or, excuse me, Steve is going to elaborate on two of them that we are a part of. One is the San Gregorio Pass and the other one is Mission Creek Subbasin. And with that, Steve, I'll let you take it from there.
Okay, thank you, Arden. I'm going to go through a quick presentation to just walk through what Sigma is, what sustainable, or groundwater sustainability plans, alternative plans are, what Mission Springs' role is and the status of the different plan updates that we're working through right now. The intention of this present, the intent of this presentation is to begin a monthly update process to the board that's going to ultimately culminate in the board adopting several of these plans come December because they're due to DWR on January of next year. So with that, give me a second to share my screen. Okay, can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So first, a little bit of background. Sigma is the Sustainable, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and it was signed into law in 2014. And it provides the framework for sustainable groundwater management over the next twenty years. It supports local management via the create, creation of a groundwater sustainability agency or agencies. And it applies to subbasins with critical higher, medium priority as determined by DWR. So over the last decade or more of DWR's analysis and evaluation and data collection throughout the state, they went in and did an analysis of all these subbasins throughout the state of California. And they determined whether they felt that basin was a critical higher, medium priority with respect to sustainable groundwater management. What Sigma requires is that once a GSA is formed, you must submit a groundwater sustainability plan, a GSP, or an alternative plan and annual reports to DWR and demonstrate progress towards achieving sustainable management. And the ultimate goal here is that by 2042, so over the next twenty years, that the statewide, we have sustainably managed groundwater basins. In addition, one of the requirements that we're focused on today is that the GSP or alternative plan updates are due every five years. And the first update for the Mission Creek Subbasin and the first GSP for the San Gregorio Pass Subbasin are due January of next year. Now, what is a groundwater sustainability agency? It consists of one or more local governments or agencies that implement provisions of Sigma. The formation of GSAs is required by all, or excuse me, in all high and medium priority basins. Basin priorities, again, this is the evaluation that DWA did, or excuse me, DWR did in determining high and medium priority basins. They looked at the population within the subbasin, the population growth, the number of public wells, number of total wells, irrigated acreage, groundwater reliance, groundwater impacts, and other adverse impacts. So within the district service area, we have three different plans going on. The first are, and three different plans for three different subbasins. First is a San Gregorio Pass Subbasin. It was determined to be a medium priority basin by DWR and there's no existing groundwater management plan for that basin. So they're required to prepare a new GSP by January of next year. And then for the Mission Creek Subbasin, it was also determined to be a medium priority basin by DWR. And the district, Coachella Valley Water District and DWA had all prepared a 2013 Mission Creek Garnet Hill Groundwater Management Plan. And then once Sigma was enacted a year later, we submitted that 2013 plan with a 2016 bridge document for approval by DWR to be considered a GSP alternative, which is now deemed the alternative plan, those two documents. And 2019, DWR accepted both of those documents as the alternative plan for the Mission Creek Subbasin and required the agencies to prepare an update by January of 2022. And then lastly is the Indio Subbasin, same as the last two, it was a medium priority basin as determined by DWR. And they had a 2010 Coachella Valley Groundwater Management Plan and a bridge document that were both accepted by DWR in 2019 as an alternative plan. And they're also, those agencies are also preparing an update to the alternative plan, also due January 2022. Now, Mission Springs' role is a little bit different in each of the subbasins, and I'll try to walk through those. In the San Gregorio Pass Groundwater Sustainability Plan, Mission Springs is a groundwater sustainability agency. So we're working directly with San Gregorio Pass Water Agency, City of Banning, Desert Water Agency, Capzon Water District, and Banning Heights Mutual Water Company in the development of the groundwater sustainability plan and ultimately the implementation of that plan towards a sustainable groundwater basin. In the Mission Creek Subbasin Alternative Plan Update, Mission Springs is a member of the management committee. The management and city, management committee consists of Coachella Valley Water District and Desert Water Agency. In addition, in Mission Creek Subbasin, only CBWD and DWI are GSAs. Mission Springs is not a GSA at this point. And the Indio Subbasin, for the Indio Subbasin Alternative Plan Update, Mission Springs is a stakeholder. We are not involved in the direct development of the plan update. We are only on the outside looking in, if you will. So we're considered a member of the public or just an active stakeholder in that process. The GSAs for that plan are CBWD, Coachella Water Authority, DWA, and Indio Water Authority. Any questions on those roles yet?
I, I do, just, I'm sorry.
You guys, go ahead, go ahead, I said to ask other people.
I hope I didn't lose my train of thought here. When you talk, when you speak of the, part of, say, we are considered part of the GSA for San Gregorio Pass. I think Director Martin is a member of the, of some group. Is that considered the, the committee that he is part of over there? Just exactly what is our role there? Are those staff meetings occurring? Do we have directors that are involved in those meetings or, or? And, and would, and is that the sticking point really between the Mission Creek plan or GSA? What, what, what are we struggling for? We're, we're acknowledged as a GSA at San Gregorio, but not these other two, I guess. How do we participate differently with the San Gregorio plan than we do the?
Okay, we'll answer your question, go ahead, go ahead.
First of all, the organization that Director Martin is. First of all, the organization that Director Martin is, is attending is not a part of the San Gregorio Pass Sustainability Plan. There are no directors that I, agency that it is, I don't think we have any directors on any of these three. To answer your question, we are part of the San Gregorio Pass because part of our agents, part of our district is in the San Gregorio Pass Water Agency, and that makes us a GSA. And together, we are part of this group that is formed as a group to be a collective GSA that is collectively preparing a groundwater sustainability plan. Did I explain that right, Steve?
Yes, you did. And I'll add that each city council or board of directors for each agency is still operating independently. We're just collectively working together as a GSA. But when it comes to plan approval or anything of that nature, it goes back to each respective board or council.
The way we should be in overall of our district.
Can, can you take a stab at a guess here on, in terms of the bulk of our district? Well, that's kind of even not probably gonna be right. How much of our district encompasses the Mission Creek Aquifer basis, as opposed to the San Gregorio Pass Aquifer? They're, they're considered separate aquifers. Ours is a subbasin. I don't know how that works. But we just got a little piece of the Indio Sub Basin, is that right? And, and can you take a guess at how much?
A big piece of the Indio Sub Basin.
Director Grash, I don't have the exact numbers, but I will. So for San Gregorio Pass, I do know the number. It's one square mile. So we only overlap into the San Gregorio Pass Sub Basin by one square mile.
Okay.
And that is a separate and distinct subbasin as determined by DWR from Indio and from Mission Creek. So that's why there's three different plans, even though we're all kind of generally the same overall Coachella groundwater subbase, or groundwater basin, excuse me. So DWR at one point considered the entire subbasin to include San Gregorio Pass, Desert Hot Springs, Mission Creek, and Indio Sub Basins as one, and they were further broken down into these four subbasins.
Okay.
So.
Right.
That was the first part. I, I don't know off the top of my head how big of an area the Mission Creek Sub Basin makes up, or the Indio Sub Basin makes up within Mission Springs Service Area, but a majority is over the Mission Creek Sub Basin.
Right.
But a big part of it is, is over the Indio Basin also.
Yeah, and I'll. As, as Madam President noted, the Indio Sub Basin, it's relatively, let's just call it around I-ten to our southern service area is over the Indio Sub Basin. It's a little bigger than that, but that's generally the area we're talking about when we talk about the Indio Sub Basin within Mission Springs Service Area.
And most of the area to the west.
Most of the area to the west.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Steve.
Okay, so the status of the GSPs and alternative plans, they're all pretty much on parallel paths. All three plans kicked off in late two thousand nineteen, and over the last, you know, year and a half, nearing two years, we've developed management areas. So if we, there's any, any decisions made on different parts of the air, subbasin, we've developed management areas, we've developed the groundwater model and completed model calibration, we've established sustainable management criteria, so we've come up with the list of, of available options and how we want to go about managing the subbasin, how we're gonna tell DWR the story that we are sustainably managing this subbasin. We've developed that criteria. And what we're working on now, which is in progress, is these last three bullets, and that is the model forecasting and planning scenarios. So we've looked at what, what population projections are, how that impacts water demand projections, and then how that ultimately is gonna impact groundwater levels. And then we're looking at different projects and management actions that can be taken to mitigate and sustainably ma, mitigate overdrafts, excuse me, and sustainably manage the subbasin. In addition, we've been working for, I'd say, the last four to six months on various preliminary draft sections inside of that plan, ultimately developing the administrative draft, which will be done with each of the, for each of the three plans in the next month. So that's where we're at right now with the plan update. And going forward, we're gonna have public, all three public drafts will be available sometime in August and September, depending on which basin, at which point they go through a forty-five day public comment period. After that, the GSAs will prepare the final plan, and they'll need to be adopted in December of this year to get ready to submit to DWR by January of next year. So to elaborate on that, the San Gregorio Pass GSP, Mission Springs as a GSA will be required to adopt the San Gregorio Pass GSP. For the Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan, the GSAs, CBWD and DWA are required by DWR to adopt the plan, but Mission Springs is not a GSA for Mission Creek Sub Basin. However, since we're part of the management committee and actively involved in groundwater management in Mission Creek, we will also adopt that plan. The only nuance is that it's just not a DWR requirement. And then in the Indio Sub Basin, GSAs are required to adopt the plan, but again, we are not a GSA in the Indio Sub Basin, so as a stakeholder, adoption will not be required. It will just be brought to the board as an informational item to keep you up to date. And then finally, again, this all culminates with submission to DWR in January next year.
Can, can you tell us who, who the representatives are from the Coachella Valley, the CBWD and the DWA, who sits in the room and, and works on the words, puts together these reports that will come before the, the two boards? Do you know who the working group is?
Staff. All the staffs of all, staff of all the agencies. The boards don't partake, we, we vote. They, they do the work and we vote on it.
Right, but my, my when in the few meetings I've attended at Desert Water, the, the reports always come from the attorney, and it doesn't appear to me that even, even any staffer in those meetings with up north and.
That's the state, that's the State Water Contract Department.
Right, which, which is what.
They've always had their attorney give the report. I think he even goes to the meetings for him, he used to.
Right, he still does.
Director Grash, it's, it's been a mix of staff level, so it's usually a general manager, assistant general manager, and a couple staff people, whether they're engineering, water resource, or public outreach. That's typically who's in these meetings. We have never had any legal councils come to these meetings. It's been purely about the nuts and bolts of the plan and getting it together. They go back to the agencies for review by their legal councils, but they are not actively involved in the development, at least not in our meetings.
You, you should also know, Director Grash, that each one of these plans have a consultant that is, that is.
That was gonna be my next question.
Putting the plan together.
Has that consultant been chosen yet? Or is it?
Yes, Director Grash, those consultants for each respective subbasin were all, went through an RFP, I, let me, I don't know if it's RPRQ, but they went through a proposal process, a competitive proposal selection process for San Gregorio Pass, Mission Creek, and Indio. Mission Springs was involved in the selection of the consultant for both the San Gregorio Pass and Mission Creek, but we, again, are a stakeholder in Indio, so we were not involved in that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, okay, so is that, I don't see any questions. We can move on to, is that, that's, that item's done correct, right, Arden?
Yes.
Item number ten. The water reclamation facility.
All right, I think Steve can give us, we, you know, we're anxiously waiting. But I think Steve will give you just a quick update on the water reclamation facility, and then I think Brian, you're gonna give him a quick update on the building. It's essentially, both should be pretty short. All right, Steve?
Okay, yeah, I'll give a quick update on the regional water reclamation facility. So as we presented in June, we went, we put the treatment plant out to bid in May, and through the course of June, we conducted our pre-construction bid conference. We had a field walk with all prospective bidders, and then we've been working through the request for information process. The RFI process closed on June thirtieth, and I, I think the total tally was three hundred and seventy-five RFIs for every aspect you could think of, of the treatment plant, insurance requirement, so on and so forth. But I'm happy to report the district has, it looks to be four or five high, large construction firms that do this type of work, that is their bread and butter, that have gotten into a very complex level of detail with the questions they were asking. So that gives us, gives us staff an inclination that we're gonna have some competitive bids on the project, because again, they're, they're in, they're in the weeds, if you will, with their questions. We originally slated to open bids today, but due to the amount of RFIs that we received, we, we bumped that one week to give ourselves a little bit more time to respond to the questions. We, we need a little bit more time for questions related to insurance and for legal counsel to weigh in. So our bid opening is scheduled for next Thursday, July twenty-second. We continue to work with the State Water Resource Control Board on our SRF funding package. I've been told that at the end of June, that the package has been routed for signature, which is one of the last steps before it goes to the finance department to complete the formal funding agreement. So we're at the, in essence, the last step towards we, until we receive the agreement to sign with the state. So that's been very positive news to finally get to this step and step in the process. And that's, that's all I have on the regional plan.
Thank you. Let me know, you two, if you have any questions, comments. Okay, critical, Critical Service Center and Administration Building Update.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, as you recall, on July first, we awarded the contract to our architect engineering team. Since then, we have began an information exchange for the two locations, working toward a presentation to provide the pros and cons of each location, and we're hoping to do that in August. So we're still gathering information on the two properties, and they're working on design schematics and. The corporate yard.
Sorry for the interruption, Brian. You started out really loud, and now I can barely hear you.
Oh, okay. I'll move closer to the microphone. The Two Bunch Palms location and the Corporate Yard location.
Still very low. We, we can't hear anything. I'm not quite sure what's going on with the audio.
We were just saying that we thought we said no comparisons. We just wanted to know about the Two Bunch Palms to begin with, but if they've been working on it, I guess we might as well listen to it. I don't know what you guys think.
I, I, we can't hear you.
Okay, sorry, okay. Okay, we're, I'm asking the, the board members to have any questions or comments on what Brian just said.
But it was very hard to hear his report. He might want to start again.
Okay. Start again.
Yeah, I, I'm not quite sure what's going on, but the volume is super low.
Okay, so I've, I've turned it up. Is that better?
Little bit.
Okay, it's, it sounds a little muffled in here, so if you cannot hear me, please let me know, but we are speaking, trying to speak normally into the microphones as close as we can. So the report started with, back in July first, we awarded the contract to Ruud Clark, our engineer and architect firm. That's two weeks ago, and since then, we have started to exchange information back and forth regarding the two locations, and working toward a presentation to provide the pros and cons of the two locations. The board then asked the question of what two locations. We talked about the Two Bunch Palms location and then the Corporate Yard location, and then the comment was from the board that it was their understanding that we were only looking at one location, which was the Two Bunch Palms. And I believe then, general manager, Willam, then asked the question, if, if that is the direction, then we will move forward with only one location. As it may have been a misunderstanding with the.
That's what we decided.
Yeah.
We got our direction. Thank you.
Okay, so it, so. So go ahead, Brian, finish with.
That concludes, that concludes my update, and we will reach out to Ruud Clark and start that process. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we already know about the corporate yard, that's why. I mean, basically, I know what, what that's like out there and everything. That would be my reason. So anyway, okay, we're just curious about the twenty-eight.
I don't mean to be such a stickler, but I'm getting messages from participants that everything is very hard to hear.
Thank you, okay. Does this help?
Little bit.
Better now?
Little bit.
Wow, I'm right up on the mic.
I know, I, I don't know what happened.
Okay. Okay, I'll try. Okay, the consent agenda, as approval of minutes, registrar demands, and acceptance of bill for sale of the Desert Hot Springs Library. Any questions or would you like to pull anything from this consent agenda, or would you like to have a discussion on anything on their, Vice President Martin?
I would like to get a little bit of detail on the, on the bill of sale for the Desert Hot Springs Library, a little more detail of what that, what that is.
Okay, that's it. That, that's what we do all the time when we accept.
Exactly. What, this is mainly just a routine where there are different ways that we can accept the, the infrastructure. They build it, they pay for it, and then they deed it to us in this, in, in this, we've always to date done this through what we call a bill of sale. And what they're doing is saying, okay, we've built this infrastructure, it's to your standards, we, we find it acceptable, we've approved it, and now they're saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna basically give that to you, and then we're responsible to take care of it from this point on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Director Grash, you'd like to talk to any, about any one of those?
No, not at this time.
Twelve, thirteen, or fourteen? Okay, thank you. Directors' reports, upcoming events and directors' reports.
Monday.
Monday. Monday, Director Grash, you have any, you wanna wait till Monday, or do you have any?
I have no reports today.
Okay, thank you. So now we will go on to general manager's report.
Okay, I'd like to, first of all, say that we will, Mr. Arturo Say is gonna be here on Monday, so let's give you the financial report on Monday, if you don't mind, and then also, we will do the public outreach report on Monday. And things are going well. We just think that we will present them on Monday. Okay? I don't really have any reason.
What you're trying to say is you're gonna give that information on Monday.
Yeah. And I, I don't really have anything more than what we have given you in writing here. You can read it. If you have any more questions, you can ask them on Monday. I do, I'll reiterate what I said at the beginning. We anticipate, as you know from hearing Steve today with, especially with the expansion of the regional plant, or the building of the regional plant, I've moving people around so, and reorganizing slightly. And as soon as I get, I, I have a reorganization chart all prepared, but I want to vet it a bit more before I pass it on to you, and I'll pass it on to you, and then, but I just wanted you to all know that at some point in the future, you're going to be seeing people sitting in different locations. Nothing big, but we need to do this, A, to accommodate the social distancing, to get the customer service counter up and going again, and also to expand on some of the other services, for example, engineering. Okay? All right, that's all I have.
Okay, what about the, the other reports under your general manager's report?
The, the only other two that I have are the.
Are we gonna do any of them today?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
So there's the other one, the PR, or Victoria?
Yeah, I said, yeah, we'll have, Brian wants to, you know, prepare for it on.
I was just gonna, that was my next question, since Victoria wasn't here, who?
Brian will do it.
Report, okay, Brian, okay.
Okay.
Got it.
And we, and we have some real exciting things going on. Victoria did a great job, so, okay.
Okay, great. District Council comments, Lena?
No comments.
Okay. Directors' comments?
Nope.
Nope. Director Grash?
Yeah, I, I, just a thought, really, the, you dismissed out of hand your promise two weeks ago to consider more than one location when you voted to hire the architect with a district facing nearly ten million dollars in fines for a fiasco created by your political structure. I would ask that the. I would ask that the, after reviewing some of the fines that have been. Ordered to be paid by various districts throughout the state. I noticed that they all have one. Thing in common, and that is that there were things that districts were able to do to lessen the impacts of those fines by. Improving the operations at. Various. Wastewater treatment plants that have had spills and. That, that, those things can include anything from newer, faster, better pumps to. And my, my thought is, can it also include requiring the district? To utilize land on or near the. The wastewater treatment plant to locate its headquarters so that the. District staff can keep a closer eye and the community can keep a closer eye on the district. As well as the district keeping a closer eye on its responsibilities at the sewer treatment plant. So I, I would ask legal counsel at some time in the very near.
I can answer the question.
Can't have a discussion on.
Like, okay, okay. But I can't answer the question. Okay. And I can't tell you though, but I can answer the question. So anyway, okay, sorry, go, go ahead. It's a very simple answer and, and it's, anyway. So anyway, so I don't think our legal counsel would know that. You'd have to ask the regional board.
She's making notes. I'm sure she can relay the.
Well, you can ask our general manager. You don't have to ask our counsel to do that.
Yeah, you call me too. Yes.
He, he can tell you too, so he knows. So if you call Arden, he'll give you the answer.
Are you done interrupting my minute?
I am done for that comment. Yeah, go ahead. What's the next comment?
So I'd like legal counsel to weigh in at some point in the near future as to whether it would. Help to alleviate the potential fines that the, that the district is facing. If we might. Be able to locate the, our, our administrative facilities closer to the wastewater treatment plant. It hasn't been done before. I wonder if in this case it could be done as well, but and after you just simply out of hand. Decided that you're only considering one location after like two weeks.
We just want to hear about one location at this point in time. We're very curious about that 20 acres.
And you're interrupting me again. At some point, you're going to learn how to do this after 33 years. I would think by now you would have been better at it than you are. The four of you, all four of your districts dumped a million gallons of sewage in my division. And you, and you think you can sit up there and make these pronouncements as if you're some kind of. Person we should look up to. I find you offensive in the way you manage this operation, and I wish that someday. Exactly.
You know what? No personal attacks in this room and during this board meeting. Okay, so done with personal attacks. And we are not having a closed session today, correct? Okay.
Wow, I can't believe it. It's four o'clock.
I know, huh? And so, but we have a closed session on Monday.
I don't.
Oh, no, you're not planning it. Okay.
John Pickney will be here also, although Lena, thank you for doing a good job.
My pleasure.
So. Will, and if we do, they will be on the agenda in case there's something that comes up in the meantime.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I hear nothing else.
Nope.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.